As there are no proclamations this evening, the first item on the agenda is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, would you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak form. And, Madam Mayor, at this time, we have two requests to speak.
Two, okay. And this will be three minutes apiece. Good evening, Mr. Berman.
I was going to speak on the agenda of the sport complex. So, it's not a public comment. Can I come back?
Go ahead.
Yeah. Do both, I guess?
You want to speak at public comment and on the sport?
No, just the sports complex. It might be double.
On the consent, yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. How you doing? Just walking in. I mean, it's a sport complex. It's a project that's been around, I mean, it's been around San Maria for 40 years. So, it's been around off and on. And honestly, I just stand there right there, look at this, you don't go that far, right? Give him a place to belong, let's put it that way. It's a project that, for some reason, I don't know what's not happening, but it's in the agenda, in the consideration. San Oliver County Supervisors, they want to donate some money. The state maybe is willing to put some money, so the momentum is there, so let's jump in it, invest it. And people see San Maria as a protection. It's how you act, how you, what do you do? Most of the time, they think San Maria is agriculture only. What about, we do the complex. They say, wow, they have a complex? I didn't know that. They might start coming in as a community. We probably need to grow more, but we need to adapt, adapt to the changes also. Don't fall behind, okay? So, let's make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Wait, okay, better.
This is a couple of weeks late. I wanted to, but I couldn't get in to see you guys. I wanted to thank the City Council for what they did with the H2A. I know you guys fought as hard as you could for us, especially you, Ms. Mayor, and Carlos, you both fought really hard, even though we lost it. And I want to say, you know, I'm proud to be here because you guys really did fight the best you could. Those people don't know anything about our town at all. And then, and thank you for coming to our side of town. Everybody forgets about us and stuff, so thank you so much for that. And then, one little thing, I didn't realize we were doing the districting. I don't care how good district, as long as we keep Carlos. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think you're supposed to be campaigning, are you there? Thank you. This concludes the public comment portion of the agenda. Before we move on, Mr. Stillwell, did you have any comments to make? Okay. Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Does anyone have an item they wish to pull for discussion?
If not, Madam Mayor, I'd like to adopt the consent calendar as submitted.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar as submitted. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Next, we have appointments. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title and begin your report?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The City Council will consider making appointments to the Block Grants Advisory Committee. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, the request before you tonight, as I mentioned, is to make appointments to the Block Grants Advisory Committee. The committee currently has five vacancies. Staff received four new applications from Isaac Berman, Craig Chamberlain, Carmen Escalante, and Shawna Nicholas. Nominations may be made by councilmembers Cordero, there are two available to him, by councilmember Waterfield, there are two available to her, and councilmember Escobedo, there is one available to him. Appointments will then be confirmed by the mayor with ratification by the City Council.
Okay, councilmember Cordero, do you have nominations?
Madam Mayor, I haven't had an opportunity yet to make contact with the people, and I really like to interview them, at least by phone, so I would respectfully ask to be postponed again.
Okay. And maybe, maybe next meeting is too soon for some of you, so...
It is.
I don't think it'll be too soon for me, but we can do it all, we should probably do it all together.
Okay. Okay, so we just postpone indefinitely?
Okay.
Okay? And councilmember Escobedo?
Yeah, I would support that as well.
You would, okay.
I need a support, I need a postpone as well, absolutely.
Okay, so then, no action is taken?
Just one quick question.
Sure.
In case I find somebody fit before the next meeting, can we, it would be good timing to request that to be in the agenda? Or we all need to be...
We would want to probably collaborate with the other council members to see if they are prepared at that point to make a nomination. Otherwise, if you have an applicant that you want to apply, we will hold on to their application until we pull them all together and can process them all at one time.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we are at what time?
5:42.
5:42. So, we can, we're, time certain is our public hearing to receive input on the district-based election maps. So, we can go on to item 5B.
I think it was the choice to just take a brief break and not move forward with 5B yet.
We could also take your reports for your activities.
Why can't we do 5B? We've got people here.
Okay, we'll do it.
Okay, do you want me to read 5B?
5B, please.
Okay. For item 5B, the City Council will consider the Santa Maria Airport Business Park Specific Plan, General Plan, and Zony Map Amendment at the northwest corner of Orchid Expressway, Highway 135, and Union Valley Parkway.
So, this is a, this is a public hearing. Staff report is to be made by planner, Mr. Albro.
So, the presentation prepared is on the city computer, so if you will use this one.
And that will set, oh, that it off of you, and as well as the applicant.
I'm sorry, I probably should have, is this going to give you enough time, Mr. Albro?
This item is probably going to take more than 15 minutes to go through. The presentation might, the initial presentation, I think, could be done in 15 minutes. And I know the applicant also intended to make a presentation to the council.
What? Should we go ahead anyway? Okay, let's go.
All right. Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is an application for a general plan amendment, a specific plan amendment, and a rezoning for a small portion of the airport Business Park Specific Plan. So, the airport specific plan is shown here, outlined in yellow. The portion of the airport specific plan that we're talking about this evening is what's indicated in red. That is a 28-acre portion of the specific plan. The overall specific plan is 2,600 acres in size, and as you can see, it's bounded by Highway 135. To the south is Union Valley Parkway, and to the north is the airport runways and facilities So, here is a enlargement of the site in question. This is obviously at the southeast corner of the airport specific plan, and you can see it's divided by the existing Foxenwood Lane, which is already constructed to its full width, and Union Valley Parkway is to the south. So, the specific plan itself was adopted in 2008. This specific plan superseded a 1995 Santa Maria Research Park Specific Plan, generally covering the same area. And again, the buildable portion of the specific plan, as it stands today, is 740 acres, and that's out of the 2,600 acres that's within the specific plan. There's various zonings. Most of it is for light manufacturing, airport services, and commercial uses, but a large portion of the airport specific plan is for the open space. The specific plan includes planning and development standards. It also includes zoning districts that are specific to the specific plan. In other words, they are unique and not seen in our typical zoning code. And much of the specific plan reflects the safety protocols for the airport district and includes overflight areas and runway approach areas that do not allow any development. This site, however, is a site that can be developed. So, the application is looking to change the general plan land use designation and also the land use designations under the specific plan. Right now, on the left-hand side of the graphic, you see what's existing, which is primarily community facilities zoning, or, excuse me, land use, and then DB, which is detention basin. On the right-hand side is what the applicant is proposing, which is consisting of, again, detention basin, although moved, light industrial, and also airport commercial, which is, again, specific to the airport district area. The zoning is also purported, proposed to be changed, and on the left, you see the existing zoning. And it's a poor graphic, but this is the existing graphic out of the plan, and the lighter green is the public facilities airport zone, and the darker green is open space. And again, that's where the basin was planned to go. And so, the applicant is proposing to change that zoning, and this would only apply to this site, and it would only apply to the airport specific plan. But what they're looking to do is a new combining district that would be introduced to the specific plan. And first off, on the west-hand side, you still have the detention basin area on the north, but then on to the south of the west side is a combined zone district of M1 Public Facilities Airport. So, the idea behind this is that it would open up the diversity of potential uses on this site to include not only public facilities as it is now, but also introduce the ability to use M1 or light industrial uses and conditional uses. Similarly, the east side is proposed to be C3, which is a, again, a specific zoning district only under the airport specific plan, and PF. So, the C3 district is the commercial zone for the airport, and again, the PF is public facilities. So, it's possible, under this proposal, to expand the types of uses that are not only permitted, but also conditionally allowed on these two properties. So, just a little bit more background, and I'll go through this quickly. Of course, the specific plan had an environmental impact report that was done in the 2008 timeframe. We did need to look at SEQA again with this proposal for changes that have happened not only in the project vicinity, this new proposal, but also changes in SEQA law and new topics and change topics such as VMT, vehicle miles traveled. So, a new supplemental EIR was prepared for the project. It was reviewed and sent out for public comment, meeting all the SEQA statutes for time periods and noticing. In that supplemental EIR, mitigations were included for air quality, greenhouse gas, biology, transportation, planning, geology and soils, hydrology, and cultural and tribal cultural resources. As with the original 2008 environmental impact report, there was also unavoidable impacts, and these are in the categories of air quality and greenhouse gases. Now, simply because it's unavoidable does not mean that there was no attempt to mitigate for these. So, the mitigation monitoring plan, which is part of the packet, includes quite a few mitigations regarding air quality and greenhouse gases. The city, with the SEQA consultant, decided to take a very conservative approach. While it's possible that the mitigations that are listed in the document will completely address any impacts, we decided that with not knowing the total extent of those impacts and how well the mitigations would work, we've included this statement of overriding considerations, which is part of the action that the council will be considering this evening. So, finally, this is the list of items in terms of council action for this evening. First would be to adopt a resolution certifying the supplemental environmental impact report, the statement of overriding considerations, and a mitigation monitoring plan for the project. The second would be to adopt a resolution amending the general plan land use policy map in the Santa Maria Airport Specific Plan. The third would be to introduce an ordinance and continue to a future meeting, a zone change for the airport specific plan, in other words, the zoning districts within the specific plan itself. Fourth would be to adopt a resolution to amend the specific plan to be consistent with the general plan, and so that would be the text and graphics within the specific plan that deal with general plan land use items. And lastly, would be to introduce an ordinance, and again, continue to a future meeting, amending the specific plan zoning to be consistent with city and specific plan zoning designations. And again, this would be text amendments for the specific plan and also the graphics that depict the zoning-related items in that specific plan. And so, that would conclude staff's presentation. The applicant is not yet present, but they do have a presentation. They indicated to me that they would be slightly tardy for the beginning of the meeting, so...
Okay. We have questions from the dice?
Certainly.
Ms. Waterfield?
Yes, you were talking about the SEQA, unavoidable effects, air quality, and greenhouse.
Right.
Where would, where would that be coming from?
It was from the operational uses of the plan, including circulation, vehicular circulation, and then also the uses that were established on the plan.
Do you guys put into effect what California's trying to do with electrical vehicles, and in the future, those probably would be able to come down quite a bit?
Mayor, council...
So, why would we count that as unavoidable?
And that, Mayor and councilwoman, that, that is precisely the point of putting the unavoidable effects statement in now. Those are very likely going to positively impact the project and lessen the impacts, but we don't have the ability to quantify what those changes would be. And there again, our decision was to take a very conservative approach, not knowing the benefits from those future technologies, the future regulation, the future ability to do electric versus fossil fuel vehicles. And therefore, at this time, to be able to move forward, we felt it was necessary to do the overriding consideration statement.
Okay, don't they, don't they not have any kind of equation to use? Because I know they use it a lot in their future equation of greenhouse gases for electric cars for the future. Do they, have they not used it for development for the future and the electric vehicles that would be involved in the circulation of the traffic and the greenhouse effects and...
And Madam Mayor and Councilperson Waterfield, my understanding is that the information that's out now about the benefits of electric vehicles is not at a project level of quantification. We don't know what the percentage would be of electric vehicles using this particular site versus any other site. And again, so, at this point, and this is additionally based on information from our SEQA consultant, who are very up and current on current regulations and current, current, obviously, supplemental impact reports, that the best strategy would be to do this overriding consideration statement.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council?
I do have questions.
Oh, yes, Mr. Escobedo.
But, but for the applicant, though.
Oh, well.
Yeah, so, I'll wait.
You're going to have to.
Who is the applicant?
It is RRM on behalf of a private party and in association with the airport district.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Johnson.
I have a question.
Oh, yes, Soto.
My question is, is for staff. I know that this was originally zoned for public's use.
Yes.
Did we have in mind what exactly we were hoping to build there, and now that we're changing the zoning, even though it can still be utilized, as I said, through the airport, if I'm not mistaken, you know, what impacts will that have on the residents that live in those areas?
Mayor and councilmember Soto, my understanding, the original intent for a good portion, at least, of the public facilities designation on that site was in order to attract the DMV. The DMV has since decided to go, and they're under construction, is my understanding, off of Santa Maria Way. So, that leaves the, the major intended tenant for that area as no longer being available. I know the applicant has been working with other public facility users, and this would be either federal offices or state offices. They have not disclosed, and my understanding, at least last I spoke about this, they did not want to disclose precisely what agency that would be. But they do have a potential public facility tenant in mind for a small portion of the western side.
And then, my other question, too, is what impacts will this have on the residents that live in that area, the mobile home residents?
Well, the mobile home park is not part of this...
Particular site.
Particular site. No other part of the specific plan is changing. The land use and zoning designations that I spoke of only will apply to this 28-acre portion of the specific plan. And I do know that Chris Hastert, the general manager of the airport, is in attendance. And my understanding from Mr. Hastert is that the airport is going to be considering some additional changes in the future to the specific plan. However, the mobile home park is not affected by this particular application.
And my last question is, I noticed that one of our commissioners voted not in favor of this plan, so I'm hoping I can get, if I can, if staff can share the reasoning behind their no vote.
Yes, Mayor and councilmember Soto, one, no vote was received from the planning commission. That commissioner expressed concern that the commercial uses potential on this site would perhaps negatively affect commercial use in the downtown zone. Staff's recommendation regarding that is that commercials uses for the downtown zone would most likely be of a different nature than this particular site, and in recommending approval of this change, staff is looking at the potential for a commercial center at this location to draw from the surrounding residential neighborhoods, not only within the city, but also of neighboring Orchid, as a good source of tax revenue, and also still, like I mentioned, have the ability to be used for public facilities if such a user was to come along.
Thank you. I'll reserve my questions for the next part of the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Albro. Madam Clerk, what time are we looking at right now?
It's 6:01, Madam Mayor.
It's 6:01? Okay. So, now, we will go back to... 5A.
Should I need to retitle?
Please.
The City Council will consider the formation of districts based on the 2020 census.
So, staff report introductions to be made by City Manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. We are embarking upon our once every 10 years redistricting of the city's districts for elections, and tonight, as we'd had before, we have the National Demographic Corp here to assist us through this process, as most of the criteria for redistricting is based on demographic data. And we have Daniel Phillips here, who's the consultant for NDC, who will be walking us through the process. This is the first of four meetings where we will be having city council meetings specifically focused on redistricting, and we do plan to have them throughout the community. We'll have another one in September, at the second September meeting for the City Council at the Veterans Memorial Center, and then it'll have time for people to digest the demographic data and present maps for public review and comment and eventually adoption later next year in March and April. But I'll turn it over to Daniel Phillips to walk us through the, or to present a presentation and walk us through the process.
Thank you.
Hello? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Daniel Phillips, and I'm from NDC. So, I will be presenting a presentation on introduction to redistricting. You've already done the initial redistricting a few years back, so this will be the first of many redistrictings that will be required after each decennial census. So, here is an outline of the process, the timeline, and so, tonight will be the first of two pre-draft map hearings, and so, the second will be on the 7th of September. And these hearings are, are intended to solicit input on communities of interest and neighborhoods within the city, so that even before we even start drawing maps, we get a sense of what, what are the important areas that need to be kept together in one district, and also just to educate on the process. Then we'll have, the initial deadline for submitting draft maps will be in February, so there'll be many months for members of the public to submit maps and submit written testimony about how they think the line should be drawn. And so, then we'll have the official release of the draft, draft maps on the 23rd of February, and then there will be two post-draft map hearings in March, where we will present different options, and you can weigh among yourselves what you think is the best, and eventually adopt that on April the 5th. So, this slide shows the criteria, federal, state, and other traditional redistricting principles, that you must, in the case of the red and beige, and may, in the case of the teal, follow when you are drawing your district lines. And so, the red column refers to federal laws, so these are the, the principles that the Supreme Court and, and Congress have decreed are the, what everyone throughout the country needs to follow when drawing district lines. The first of which is that the districts should be equal population. This is population period, not voters... pretty equal. The second of those is the Federal Voting Rights Act. So following that law means not diluting the voting strength of protected class voters, those who are historically marginalized or disadvantaged certain racial, ethnic groups. But on the flip side, we don't want to engage in what are, what's called racial gerrymandering, where you make race or ethnicity the only or sole consideration when you're drawing these district lines. And so it should be a factor, but it can't be the paramount factor. So after the federal laws comes the state laws. And I want to emphasize here that there has been a change in state law since you did your initial districting. There was something called the Fair Maps Act that was passed. And what they did was, they, they laid out a list of rank order criteria that had to be followed. So it, you, you do your best to follow all four of those, but if you can't follow all four because of various trade-offs, you, you prefer one, those higher order criteria, like one, two. So the first of those is that the districts should be contiguous, which just means that they're single pieces. The second is to not divide neighborhoods and what are called communities of interest. These are socioeconomic geographic areas that should be kept together in one district. Number three is to have easily identifiable boundaries. So they follow, follow lines that are already kind of existing and people know about, like freeways, major roads, and, and railroads, et cetera. And the fourth is to draw districts that are compact, which means they do not bypass one group of people to get to a more distant group of people. And finally, state law adds that prohibition at the bottom to not favor or discriminate against a political party. So this is a totally nonpartisan lens that you're looking at here. So once you have determined that you've followed federal and state law, then you may consider these other traditional redistricting principles. The first of which is to minimize voter shifted to different election years. So that's pretty self-explanatory. Number two is to respect voters' choices slash continuing in office. So avoid, that basically means avoid having two incumbent council members in one district so that they, one's not forced to leave just because of the way the lines are drawn. Number three is that future population growth, if you anticipate like a, a major housing development on the horizon in the next 10 years, you can intentionally under-populate a certain district where that housing development's gonna go up, while not straying too far from equal population, that number one criteria. And then lastly is preserving the core of existing districts, which is similar to the first one on that list. So, none of those are required, but they're, they're often, they're often done. So this is a demographic summary of the existing districts that you have, districts 1, 2, 3, and 4. And the first row up there is the 2020 estimated total population. Now, I want to stress here that these are estimates. You, you may well know that the census data, the official census data, has not been released yet. We expect that to be released August 16th. However, the state actually has to take that official census data and, and do a reallocation of prisoner populations. And that will take an extra 4 to 6 weeks. And so we had to wait for them to do that, for that, the data that we can use. And so, what I'm showing here is our best, our company's best estimate of what the 2020 population was. And so our hope is that these numbers will be very close to the official census numbers when they come out. But we wanted to provide this in advance so that you can start thinking now what the districts look like. So that first row is that, that total estimated population for each of the four districts. And so, each of the four districts must contain about 26,500 people, based on our estimates. And number, District 1, right now, based on our estimates, is quite a bit underpopulated. So you did your dis, initial districting based on 2010 numbers, and so we estimate that over the last 10 years, District 1 has become much less populated relative to the rest of the city. And so, it's 10% under the ideal that we want to strive for. The districts 2, 3, and 4 have, have grown relative to District 1, especially District 4 in the southeast. So when you look at the total column to the very right, you see the number 16.07%. That means that it is, that, that total deviation is pretty high. We, we try to keep it under 10%, and, and if we can, get it close to 5%. So, the, the thrust here is that the districts are no longer population balanced, and so this will have, this will have to be taken into account when, when we do the redistricting. So there's no possibility of just maintaining the districts in their current form. Now, if you look at the citizen voting age population, which is the, the next segment of rows, well, the reason we refer to this is because these are those who are eligible to vote, and when it comes to following the Federal Voting Rights Act, the courts have decreed that this is the most important data point when it comes to making sure that you're not diluting the voting strength of any protected class group of people. So, you'll see that among those who are eligible to vote, the, the total in the city is 56% Hispanic, 33% non-Hispanic white, and smaller percentages of blacks and Asians. Now, there are, there are higher concentrations of Hispanics currently in districts 1, 2, and 3, and especially 1, and then less so in District 4. So, this is, this is the most basic demographic information we have, but we also have a lot of other demographics as well. And I would be happy to show that in map form in the story map, which is something I'll, I'll touch on a little later. So, when it comes to following that state criteria, one of the things it mentions is making sure that neighborhoods and communities of interest are undivided. And so, in order to determine what neighborhoods are, we want to ask two questions. What are the neighborhoods and what are their geographic boundaries? And so there's examples here of physical features that might define a neighborhood or a neighborhood boundary. I already mentioned natural dividing lines like major roads and, and rivers and railroads, but you can also think of it as areas around parks or schools or other neighborhood landmarks. So we'd like to get public testimony about what the important neighborhoods are, either from the council or from members of the public. But if we don't get that testimony, we have planning records and other similar documents that may provide that information. But looking beyond neighborhoods, we have this idea of a community of interest. And so this is something that state law has, has really made important. And so, in order to determine that, we also ask two questions. First is what defines a community of interest? It's a geographic area, but it's combined with some shared issue or characteristic that, social or economic, that is impacted by city policies. And so we, we'd really like to hear what the, what the communities are, the communities of interest. But the second question is, would this community benefit from being included within a single district for purposes of its effective and fair representation? You'll notice that there are quote marks here because that's taken directly from the law, because the law recognizes that there may be communities of interest that would benefit from having multiple representatives on the city council. And so, frankly, where this is really gonna come into play with your city is downtown. Is that a community of interest in the sense that it would be better represented by just one member of the city council, or split among multiple? So if that, if it's better to be split among multiple, that's okay, as long as you make that clear and, and declare it, then it's not considered a community of interest that should be kept together in one district. So, also the little disclaimer at the bottom, communities of interest have nothing to do with political parties' incumbents or political candidates. So we have a couple map review tools that remain available on the city website. The first is a story map, which is something that you can use to explore the different geographic areas of the city and kind of think about what the neighborhoods and communities of interest might be. And then the interactive review map is similar to that, only it, it allows you to view multiple data layers at once and gives you more flexibility in that sense. So my last slide is to prompt discussion. What are the neighborhoods in the city, and what are their boundaries? What other notable areas are in the city, and what are their boundaries? And are there any questions about the mapping tools? And before I conclude my presentation, I would like to demonstrate the story map, so you can have a sense of what that looks like. So if you go to the Santa Maria redistricting website, you'll see it's under elections, redistricting, how to get involved, and you'll see descriptions of communities of interest and what they are, and how to participate in the process. And then under mapping here, you'll see there's a story map and an interactive review map. So the story map, when you open it, it looks like this. And it's pretty simple to use, all you have to do is scroll down, and you will be presented with different maps of the city. And so the first section shows various census data, such as tracts and block groups. You can see the zip codes that make up the city, one in the west, one in the east, one in the south. If you scroll a little further, you can see that there, this is the, that, we call it CVAP, that important data point when it comes to satisfying the Federal Voting Rights Act. And you can see the racial, ethnic breakdown in the city. And you can see that when it comes to Latinos, like I mentioned before, they tend to concentrate in the northwestern part of the city. And when it comes to other groups, though, they are much smaller. And you can see the percent white here as well. Other demographics of interest include a percent who have graduated high school. So you can see there's a, less of those, so the, the cooler colors mean that they are, there's a smaller percentage. So this means that fewer people are high school graduates in this central part of the city. If you want to look at renter households, you can see that there are more renters in the central part of the city. And when it comes to income, you can see that there are slightly higher income levels toward the northeast and the southeast. So there are other, you can see that there are several different demographics we've made available here. Local data, you have your current city council districts, which are displayed on all the maps on this story map, but you also can look at zoning areas. We talked earlier tonight about zoning, and so you can see what the zoning designations are in the city. So yellows are residential, are, are single-family, lower-density residential, and then you have higher-density residential with the brown colors. Commercials are red. If you want to actually get, have a legend for the map, you click on this button at the bottom left, and that will show you what each of the colors represents. You can scroll down here. We, we also talked about the airport tonight, so you can see safety zones that had been defined by the airport, basically showing where planes take off and land, and you can see the noise impacts from those as well. This is data that comes from the county, so you can see the current Board of Supervisors districts. Most of the city is in the 5th district, but there are segments in the 4th district. I'll give a little plug for the Santa Barbara County redistricting effort, which is also going on right now. I see we have the chair in attendance, High Chair Morris. So we're involved in that process too. But, so, but this is how the lines are currently. You also can do, look at Board of Education and et cetera. Now, school data, I mentioned that schools might be an important factor when it comes to defining neighborhoods. You can see that most of the city is in the Santa Maria Bonita School District, but there are, on the extreme south, in the Orchid District. And then this shows the elementary school attendance areas, and, and with the, the red lines. You have junior high as well, and high school. So these are all the, these are all the data layers that you can play with on the story map. But if you want to actually go to the interactive review map and say you want to see zip code ones with the elementary school attendance areas, you can, you can basically display any combination of layers at once that might be of interest to you. And so you just check and then check these data layers. And if you want to change the base map, you have the opportunity to click on this, and maybe you want to see the satellite view. And that will show you what that looks like. And there's, there's other options as well. So, like I said, I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the mapping tools or any of the data. But I think that will conclude my presentation. Thank you for your attention. Are there any questions of the council?
I do, Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Escobedo.
Yeah, can you, could you please elaborate a little bit more in regards to preserving core of the existing districts, please?
Certainly. So you see here the current district lines. So preserving the core of the current districts means that you don't radically change the map from how it is now, so that, like, you, you still have a sense of what is currently in District 1, most of that will stay in District 1. And the same with the other districts. So you try to preserve the current districts to the best you can while, while still following the other criteria. But if you recall, that is a, that's an optional consideration, it's not a requirement. There are other requirements that may prevent you from doing that as much as you would like, but you, you can still try your best to do that.
I have a question.
Yeah, Ms. Waterfield?
I have a comment. I would like to keep the downtown area in all four districts, as we had planned in the beginning. I think that's important to, to do that, if it's possible to do that. I know that even though if it may default to one or two council members, I just want the public to know that the other council members will also chime in at any time to take share of that.
I know initially when we spoke of this, that we were all interested in keeping the downtown in everyone's district, so that we all have that vested interest in that, because it is so important for the economy of Santa Maria that it does succeed also. Any other questions?
My question is about...
Soto.
Thank you, the website. I, I was just on there, and I noticed that there is, is it a form that folks can submit to share, to let us know what their, what their, to give comment on the communities of interest in the city of Santa Maria? Can you elaborate a little bit more on, on the process for that, for, for submittals, and then also for staff, the different ways in which we hope to seek the community's engagement through this process?
Yeah, so if you look on the website here, there are multiple ways to let the council know about your thoughts on this process. You could attend a meeting like, like tonight and give public comment. You can submit an electronic written comment to this email address, redistricting@cityof Santamaria.org. There's also a public comment form. Looks like the community of interest form hasn't been established yet, but once that is linked and ready to go, that will be a place where you can do that. But for the meantime, you can also put it as a public comment form. You could submit it in writing and mail it to this address here. And, and then I think your, the rest of your question might have been for staff as far as outreach.
Mm-hmm.
So, city staff?
Councilmember Soto through the mayor. So our primary outreach is gonna be working out, working with these... So our primary outreach is going to be working out, working with these, these public hearings, providing the information through press releases and advisements to the public about the website, opportunities to participate, and ways to be able to provide their information to the council. So at the initial point, as, as Daniel mentions, really identifying community of interests and neighborhoods and areas of continuity that should be considered. And then as we get the census data, we'll be able to also consider maps and have the maps then come to the city council in March.
Mayor?
Oh, Mr. Escobedo.
Yeah. As the representative of District 1, which is the most Spanish-speaking house in, in the city, I would like to request that, I mean, we can do some Spanish outreach. I see that all the writing comments and everything on the website, it's in English, so I would, I would like to see we can, I mean, there's, there's a community of interest form in Spanish, but there's other stuff that I would like to see there to be in, in Spanish as well.
We do have a, a translated version of the website shown here.
Okay.
Where else?
You just have to click.
If you go up and click en español.
Como? ¿Cómo se dice?
There's a.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Okay. I'd like to open this up a public hearing. Madam Clerk, do you have any requests to speak or written correspondence?
No, Madam Mayor, no request to speak at this time, and we have not received any written communications about this item.
So I'll close the public hearing and bring this item back to the council for any discussion and guidance for staff.
Madam Mayor, if there's no other comments, I'd like to make a recommendation to receive a presentation on the redistricting process and permissible criteria to be considered to create district boundaries, two, to conduct a public hearing to receive public input on district bindings, boundaries, and three, provide guidance concerning the drafting of redistricting's maps.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. And Madam Clerk, no further discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
There we go. Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Motion carries. I think that bothers me is that, that we are, by state law, we have to go out and do outreach in our community, but we also have a community that there aren't a lot of computers in the homes. People can watch us on TV, and I think the best outreach is on TV. And yet we are required to do this by state law. So it sort of really doesn't work in the favor of the population we have here. And that's all I have to say. There goes the state again, taking over. Okay. So, Mr. Albro, is the applicant here yet?
Madam Mayor, Council, the report is that the applicant is within five minutes of arriving.
Okay, thank you. So we can take a five-minute break until the applicant gets here, and then we can finish up the agenda item. Anyway, Mr. Albro is the applicant here.
Madam Mayor, Cindy Kelly Eaton, yes, the applicant is here. Eric with RRM is prepared to make a brief presentation.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So sorry for putting you back on your schedule.
I understand. You just flew into our wonderful airport.
Well, I didn't fly in here, but I flew into.
Oh, you didn't? Okay.
Yeah.
You should have just gone with it.
I flew into that other, like, third rate.
Yeah, third rate.
Yeah. And that's why I'm late. I mean, if I flew in here, it would have been better, obviously. So anyway, apologies, but thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm Eric Justiceon with RRM Design Group and representing G3. And I know that Frank did his usual great job giving you the lay of the land, so I'm gonna try to just snap it up a little bit here, so you don't spend too much time on it. But I, if you have any questions, of course, that's why I'm here. So in almost about two, two, two years ago, a little over two years ago, we did a long-term lease with the airport district on this piece of land, which is about 28 acres. Our, our motivation to do that was that it's beautiful location, you know, between Foster and UVP, right along 135. It's zoned commercially, but it was restricted essentially to public facilities only. It's where the DMV was going to go, before they found a different place to go. And it was part of the 2007 specific plan for the airport area. And so a lot of time has gone by and just not a lot of action. So I met Chris and his board members, and we started talking about, how do we, how could we go about creating more opportunity for the city and for the district in, on that piece of property? And that's when we, we got a deal together to lease the land, and I laid out sort of some ideas on how we might rezone it to just essentially allow the public facilities to be there, which is why it's now kind of a combining districts area, and add some commercial designations to it as well. And I think you probably saw a lot of that. We went to a couple study sessions with the planning commission, answered some of their questions, had their hearing last March, and they, they voted to send it on to you guys for approval. You can see where it's located, and I sort of think, you know, in terms of the city's position on this, it's in the city, right? The most, furthest, most southern piece of the city, surrounded by the County of Santa Barbara. It's all Orca down there, right? And you have a great commercial location, which is going to be revenue to the city, you know, by, paid by a lot of people in the county that are shopping in the city, which is kind of an ideal deal, at least in my mind. So it's in a great spot, it's pretty flat. I failed to mention that there are some environmental issues that you're well aware of in the airport area with regard to the California tiger salamander, which really screwed things up. And so thanks to the district, the airport district, they have a great biologist, and we figured out a way through that to be able to mitigate for essentially that, that species, and I think really opens up the possibility for the rest of the airport area, which we're interested in helping them out with. So let me just, what we've chosen to do is zone the piece closest to Highway 135 with sort of a more broad retail office commercial designation with public facilities as well. That would be allowed. Things like a grocery center, and I'll, I'll show some slides here that give you an idea of things that we have in mind. Grocery, drug, brewery, pizza, coffee, you know, all kinds of things that would be suitable for a neighborhood commercial center. On the left-hand side of the light industrial, what we're thinking of there is essentially just some uses that maybe don't require the frontage along, and visibility along the highway, but are needed in the area. Could be some general office space, could be some, like a nursery center. And there's some operators that we've looked at that are interested in that site for that kind, that kind of use. So far, we've probably had interest in, you know, probably about 10 different parties are interested in some form of an operation out there, ranging from home, home furnishings and appliances. They already operate here. The, the garden center and, you know, sort of home, home improvement supply places interested in that. Gas station. We've had interest from a state, state office user, and also from Santa Barbara County operator down there for a potential fire station. That's the one on the, on the right there. So we've had a lot of discussions with multiple different users over the last couple of years. Of course, we don't, we're not really at the go-point yet, so there hasn't been a lot to talk about. But I think it's gonna, it's gonna prove pretty fruitful for, for the city and the district ultimately. So here's just a couple images of what we've put together that could be uses out there. And here again, I just want to show these. We have, we have a concept for one part of the, of the east side, which is 5135, for sort of like a, like a marketplace idea, where you'd have like a food court and pedestrian area plaza, and people could eat outside, they could go get their pizza or a burger or maybe have a beer, and just have a nice, a nice neighborhood thing. It's within driving and walking distance to a ton of rooftops that, you know, they're either driving all the way down to Clark, or they're driving further up the road. And I think this, this is going to really fit a need in that particular area. So here's just a sketch some of my guys put together on, on something like that. So you can see, like, it's got, you know, the potential to be a gathering place and I think make, make a really good impression and be a nice high-quality development down in this area. So the zoning we have in place supports all these things that we're talking about here, and allows us to continue to pursue public facility uses, government buildings or whatever else. There are not a lot of them out there, quite honestly, but it's 28 acres, and you, you just never know. You know, we haven't really put it out on the airwaves yet. This is the office building we were, we were doing for the state building. Anyhow, so here we are, and I'm sure you have questions for me, so I'll keep it brief and end it there.
Any questions from the council? Yes, Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I think we were talking earlier before you got here, and the question was asked by another council member, oh, so what might be going in there? I was thinking more about what might not be going in there. And, and my comparison is that we've got a residential district right close by. And I mean, this is a little exaggerated perhaps, but we don't, I wouldn't want to see like a steel mill going in there where they're pounding stuff to death. I mean, it's, I, I'm sure that the noise is going to be difficult enough with just the airport traffic. So are you, are you able to assure us that some sort of, when you say light industrial, that light industrial wouldn't be something incredibly noisy that would annoy the people on the, on the south side of, of the boulevard there? And the reason I say that also is because when I was on the council when we approved that roadway to go through there, and that was a serious contention, was the traffic noise that was going to be. So I would hate to saddle some of those people in the Fox and Wood area, even though they're, they're not really in the city, they're still our neighbors. And is there anything that's going to go in, is going to, you think, going to generate that?
Yeah. Well, no, not right offhand. We, we are looking at some, some storage, you know, opportunities, which is, you know, pretty benign use, pretty quiet. I would say that the good thing about your process is, before we do anything, we have to come back to the planning commission on a CUP, on a conditional use permit. So you kind of have two bites, I guess, of the apple, so to speak. And you would get to look at all those operational characteristics, right? So everything from traffic to light and glare and noise and smell and odor, you would be reviewing, and I think that's a great, a great safeguard for the things that you're bringing up. The immediately western neighbor is land owned by this county of Santa Barbara, and there's a food bank over there, there's, I forget what else, you know, is there a animal?
Animal shelter.
Animal shelter and other things. And so it's pretty, I mean, it's pretty much a government uses and, and the not very sensitive receptors. Fox and Wood is on the other side of UVP, pretty far south, you know, it's not, I would say it's, I, I would highly doubt anything would happen. But we do not have any plans for any, any kind of major industrial works out there. Like I said, a garden, garden store, you know, for supplies and for, for the agricultural kind of area out there and homeowners is, is things that, are things that we've talked about.
Do you know of any other developments that are, are geographically associated with an airport like this? It would seem to me that people might tend to say, well, you know, I would, this would be great. I mean, I'm all for that. We certainly want to increase the availability and versatility of the, of the property out there, but I would consider this a little bit more if it weren't so close to the airport, because of the noise. Do you know of any others that are doing well and are, seem to have been compatible?
Yeah, I mean, these types of uses are sort of like the absolute great candidate for this location near, near an airport like this. Honestly, I think somewhat unfortunately, I don't think residential is a, is an opportunity. Multi-family residential probably wouldn't be horrible there, but it's, number one, regulated by the FAA. It's not, not a permitted use under their guidelines. And, you know, while it could be a good use, I think the commercial uses that we're talking about here are just perfect. You see this kind of thing around airports everywhere.
Absolutely.
You really do. And I think, you know, when the district comes back and fine-tunes the rest of their airport-specific plan, you're going to see other uses like we're talking about here also probably pop up. Because it's pretty old, it's not really, I don't think in, you know, sort of in step with what the market is, where the market is now.
Thank you very much.
Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good, thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Soto, you had questions, didn't you?
I, I do, thank you. So in recent months, there's been a number of zone changes that the council has approved. And so one of my questions is, it's regarding time. When do you foresee this actually taking, starting the development phase of this, of these projects? And do you already have a developer in mind?
Well, I don't know. I could be very precise, but I, I think we're going to get a lot of interest straight away, right? If you, if you guys follow through on the action and we're able to proceed. So we would go right into working out some subleases with, with various interested parties. And like I said, I think we have several that are, I think, are ready to go. And then we go, come back with a, a plan development application for architecture review and site, site planning, site design, you know, all, all the, all the details. Planning commission would have to look at it, and then we'd go into construction drawings, and then construction. We have some offsites and some public improvements to put in along, you know, the roadways. There are a lot of conditions in the specific plan, since it's still in effect, that we're going to have to negotiate and work with the city on. So I think all said and done, you're probably talking about minimum 18 months, probably to two years to get through all that business.
My other question is the adjacent agricultural fields that are going to be surrounding this, these acres. What's going to happen to that? Is that going to stay in place? Are you all going to continue to farm that land?
Yeah, I believe that the district intends to continue to farm that land. You're talking about the area north of Foster, right along 135. So that, that area begins, become much more under the approach area of the runway. We went to SB CAG for the Airport Land Use Commission, you know, sort of finding of consistency with their plan. And you probably know this, but they're in the middle of, you know, going between an old one, that's really old, and probably out of sync, and a new one. So they gave us a finding of consistency. The stuff on the north is likely to stay in ag for, for, because there's not a lot you can do with it. You can get a roadway through there, which is why Fox and Wood is, is shown in a map to connect all the way up to Airport Drive. But I don't think much is going to happen in there. Beyond that, there's some detention, regional detention basins that are planned for that area.
Was that also part of the environmental study? The impacts, the impacts of the farmland on near this development?
Well, I, I guess, in, in a way, in a manner, so to speak, an environmental impact report probably looks at, you know, what are the reasons to, you know, what are the, what do you call it? The pressures on developing other lands because development has gone on. And in this particular case, there's just no real opportunity for that particular ag land north because of the reasons I just stated. So that- Um, so that, that's not really an impact. We have ag on one side of this property that's on the north only. Everything else is developed around it. Yeah. It was already zoned a commercial designation anyway. So basically, it's a little bit of a stretch to say it's a rezoning. It is a rezoning i- in the, in the term of art, but it's really just adding some additional uses to an area that was already zoned commercial to allow some more opportunity to develop it.
Absolutely. Madam Mayor, I have a comment.
Yes.
And I, I think this perfect location, this location is a perfect location for commercial and different kind of public entities. The fire station that the county would like to put there, that is desperately needed. They definitely need another fire station over there. But one thing that we did do when we did, uh, put in Union Valley were those good sound walls for the neighborhoods. And I would imagine, just as you said before, whatever business goes in there, we have another crack at it as to noise control and aspects of that. I know when we get a lot of those fighter jets that come in and land and just play at the airport, nothing's gonna keep the sound away from, from there. You, you can hear them all over the city of Santa Maria. So, um, I, I really like this, uh, this development. I think it's gonna be a high tax-based revenue for the city of Santa Maria, 'cause you're pulling in people from the county, from the other side of Santa Maria and Sunrise Valley, all in that area. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a nice pool.
Yeah, it's interesting. Two of the users we're talking to, their market goes all the way down towards Boulton and that whole southern area. And, uh, they serve a large, large areas of that, that part of Santa Barbara County. And, uh, they are, they're already in town. They just wanna be closer to that end of town because I think their market is expanding.
A nice grocery store would go in there. I mean, it'd, it'd cover a lot of residents in that area.
Yeah, you're right.
Any, any other questions?
I do.
Oh, Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So during this session, I hear about, uh, you know, how great would this be and we talk about revenue and I see that the definition on, uh, light industrial, I found it too broad, too, too, I mean, encompass different, uh, assembly plants, scientific, uh, scientists, research, experimental development and so on and so forth. And I think that, you know, having a fire station and different industries there would be beneficial because that would bring revenue to the city. My only concern is, uh, having storage units there, you know? Changing from an open space, uh, for the community, change it to, to see a bunch of small boxes that would, I don't see a lot of revenue coming from those. So that's one of the concerns I have. And aside from, um, people coming to the airport and go and do shopping in this area and not going to downtown. I mean, we talk about downtown and, uh, I think that, um, this might prevent some of the incoming visitors from visiting downtown area and getting to know what Santa Maria has to offer and push them into this, uh, south and eventually maybe Orchid area, uh, which also they're having some developments there. So my, yeah, especially the, the storage unit. I mean, um, I don't, I would like to see if something happens there that actually brings value to the city of Santa Maria and revenue, uh, to it. So those are more comments that, uh, question.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there are no further questions, I'll open up a pub- public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak or written correspondence?
Madam Mayor, we have, um, no written correspondence that you haven't already received in the packet. Um, we have three requests to speak.
Okay, thank you. And that'll be three minutes. Good evening, Mr. Hastert.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. Thank you for bringing this item forward. We're, uh, very excited. We get a lot of interest in what are we doing to promote the business park and start things going there? This is actually the kickoff of the business park. We have a lot of trouble trying to market what we have with all of the issues with salamanders and, and zoning and things like that. Uh, DMV was our big push for the site and I was working with Tom Ross and we were working with GSA and the state, really trying for it. One of the big things that came for this site was it's not very close to other facilities where places, places for people to eat, things like that. So when there's selection criteria, that's why they chose where they went to. So this type of a mixed use even helps us to promote the public facilities on the site because a state building going in is still gonna want other facilities near them for fist, for food and for gas and for things like that. Um, I wanna thank the city staff. They've actually been very professional to work with and, uh, Frank Albro and SWCA, the consultant, they've been very professional and we thank them for, for their work on this project. Uh, we talked about why the change. Um, I've been asked, why is the airport not the one as the applicant up here? Uh, to be totally transparent, we actually found a good developer to work with that's paying for a lot of the cost, so it's not coming out of our checkbook from the airport. Uh, Councilmember Soto, you asked a question about agriculture. So agriculture is our number one revenue source for the airport, as silly as that seems, but, uh, we have several hundred acres that are under ag and we, we plan to keep as much of that as possible. Uh, we very much value the farmers that we have on the airport and we wanna keep that going. Uh, we do have several areas that are in the business park right now that are temporarily being farmed and really that just keeps us, helps us to maintain the property. We don't have to mow it, we don't have to maintain it and it's good revenue for the airport. So there would be some sites, hopefully within the business park that are open space that we can continue to do ag. Some of it will depend on US Fish and Wildlife and other factors, but we definitely wanna try to keep as much ag as possible. And, uh, Councilmember Escobedo, uh, we definitely wanna have things that are compatible with the airport, uh, sound stuff and then also compatible with our residents to the south. We, we strive very hard to maintain compatibility and as Councilmember Waterfield said, the fighter jets don't help us much, but they built the facility, so we accept them here. Uh, but, um, we're looking at a number of different uses. Um, the one thing I would like to point out is right now, um, because we're a government agency, there's no tax money that comes into the city or the county. Uh, in most public facilities, there still would be no tax money. So no matter what the use is, it will be an increase to the tax revenue coming into the city because the possessory interest tax, which will be charged for, for that site. I'm happy to answer any questions related to the airport. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
Yeah.
Do you have a question?
I do.
So?
Um, we're, I'm constantly asking you about this during our, um, meetings, but what's the word on the street with the residents? Have you, the residents of the Mobile Home Park?
So I, I just attended their meeting. They have a, uh, association that has annual meet, or not annual, but regular meetings. And, uh, so I just attended that meeting. Uh, we have actually a very good relationship now with the Mobile Home Park residents. Uh, we are looking to make some improvements. Obviously, it's an aging park and there's, there's issues with the park, but our goal is to really embrace the Mobile Home Park the way it is, try to make some improvements and try to work with the residents to make it the best park possible for as long as they can be there.
And how do you? Were you able to discuss this change?
Uh, so this change didn't come up. It's actually very far away from the Mobile Home Park, uh, but I think in general it'll be beneficial because it'll allow some other facilities for them to go to for food or, or gas or anything. That the airport area is very difficult to find gasoline with rental cars when you're returning. There's not many gas stations around the area and food. Other than McDonald's and Moxie, there's not much around there. So this is gonna benefit everybody, including the residents of the Mobile Home Park and Fox and Wood.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Michael Lozo, Lozo? Did I butcher your name or?
Not too bad, Lozo.
Thank you.
Is how I pronounce it, but I don't ensure that's right, so. Um, Mike Lozo for Safer. We submitted some written comments, uh, right before the planning commission meeting. Um, our concerns are that the SEIR focuses on identifying impacts for a conceptual development plan. Um, however, the conceptual development plan doesn't cover all of the permitted uses proposed to be allowed by the specific plan project, which are much broader than, than the ideal, uh, scenarios that you're seeing, uh, on the screen, for example. Thus, uh, our concern is that the permitted uses include warehouses and distribution, for example, uh, which if you wanna talk about noise and traffic, those would obviously raise those very concerns, a lot of trucks, you know, which are the, you know, the noise and the, and the air pollution. Um, so those are permitted, uh, under the proposed specific plan and the EIR doesn't assess the impacts of those permitted uses because it focuses on this conceptual development plan, the kind of ideal plan. Um, and these are permitted under the proposal. They're not, as far as I could tell, they weren't conditional uses, they were permitted uses. Um, and the response was that, you know, they're essentially conditional, that there'll be additional environmental review at some time in the future if those were proposed. We would hope that's true, but I don't think the language of the specific plan that I was looking at in the package actually says that they're under permitted uses, not, and there's another category that says, uh, conditional uses. Um, so we believe that the EIR should have analyzed the reasonable development that is being permitted because future permitted products, projects include potentially warehouses and distribution centers. Um, and the EIR just doesn't address those impacts. Uh, in addition, we had a biologist, Dr. Smallwood, came down, did a quick visit of the site, uh, but, uh, he describes, uh, his concerns that the baseline for environmental impacts was insufficient in his opinion. Uh, and in addition, that it fails to address the cumulative impacts of, onto wildlife and, and for example, he's, he, his expertise is about animals kinda colliding with things. And, um, for exa- so he's always concerned about traffic impacts and this is heightened, of course, to the extent there were warehouses or in, uh, a distribution center, that traffic impacts to wildlife are quite profound, generally speaking, and, and those would be heightened there. And likewise, um, he, uh, is always concerned about, uh, birds running into windows and buildings and things like that. And thirdly, we did have, uh, a air consultant also look, uh, at the air modeling and raise concerns about that as well. In terms of, you know, specifying, it seems to me this, the thing that would be ideal would be, you know, if in fact these uses such as warehouses or distribution centers are not likely to happen and those should be very clearly indicated as conditional use, uh, uses that would require additional environmental review should they ever come up as a proposal in the future. And unless you have a question, so I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn Morris. I know, I, yeah, can we turn off the air conditioning? Yeah.
Santa Maria evenings, starting to get a little chillier. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Glenn Morris of the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce. I wanted to address just a couple of other, um, benefits that we see from this particular project and, and maybe address one, a, a concern that was raised by members of the council. Mr. Hastert alluded to the fact that as, you know, the, the area around the airport is our primary job center, right? That, that's where most of our, um, head of household jobs in the community reside today. It, it's also really the last area in the community where we can continue to add head of household jobs, um, that, that we wanna see in the community, right? So the area around the airport is really over the next five to 10 years where that development's gonna happen, um, in, in terms of new jobs. One of the challenges with that, both for the folks that go out there to work today as well as folks we'd like to see, uh, put jobs there today, is the lack of services for, uh, for, for their employees, right? So whether it's a place to go to lunch or a place to gas up the car 'cause they forgot in the morning or, or whatever that is, um, that lack of, of kind of ancillary services around that southwest corridor of the, of the city is, is a challenge. And so this would help, um, with that attractiveness as we look to add other industrial and high wage jobs in that part of the community. A, a couple of times today, I think there's been concerns raised about conflicts between developments at the southern end of the community, um, and the attractiveness of development within the downtown. Um, and obviously we share some of that concern, be, you know, we've been very active and, and continue to be active in promoting the redevelopment of our downtown. But I would tell you, I really think those are very different uses and I think they will attract very different kinds of tenants. Um, the, the folks that are gonna go and put a business out in this development are, are either looking for a facility that is too large, frankly, to sit in our downtown or their customer is folks that are looking for something close to home. And, and not, they're not necessarily gonna be users that are trying to serve tourists or, or people from the broader regional, um, you know, entertainment or, or, you know, those kinds of uses. Conversely, folks that we think will come to the downtown are, are going to be more boutique in nature, they're going to be more, um, regional serving, you're gonna be the, those unique retail or experience-based kinds of activities where they need that concentration of like businesses that a downtown provides. Um, so we really think that it's very possible in a community the size of Santa Maria to have a very healthy vibrant downtown, a very strong retail center, i.e. the, the Betaravia corridor, and strong neighborhood-serving retail communities like what you're having proposed here today. So, um, we really think that this kinda fits a unique niche that is not, um, being served well in the community from both of those two perspectives and, uh, thought that was a good, an interest, an important perspective to share tonight.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Waterfield?
Uh, you know, I, I look at this project and, uh, what Mr. Morris says, we've always, anytime we developed any type of retail in Santa Maria, the downtown subject has come up. But Santa Maria is so unique, the downtown is completely different than we would do the Enos, uh, retail and other retails around Santa Maria. I look at this particular project and what's so unique about it is that, that we have the Skyway Park on Skyway and right now, how many homes are we building right behind it? Can somebody tell me, Frank, that, all those residential homes right there?
It's in the high 300s.
Yeah, so we have 300 homes being built right behind it. What is so great about that is that the Skyway Park is gonna help with those, those residents because those residents want someplace to go. But what's even better is that we've got a walking path from Skyway Park to Foster that could fill, uh, a, a walking area for people, those 300 homes that they wanna go and have something different to eat, if they wanna go and shop, they want, just wanna get out and, you know, have the recreational area that they have. Santa Maria has been able to develop different spots for different lifestyles because we all have completely different lifestyles here. So, um, I think that's one of the, the best unique things that, uh, we can do is to not only build something that is gonna bring revenue to the city of Santa Maria, but encompass the county that will come over into the city of Santa Maria and use that facility as well. And those are just my comments.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Yes, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Yeah, I, it, this thing has been so long and I know with, with the, uh, the plan, the airport and the research park and what people wanted to put in there has so evolved over the years and they, you keep, it keeps coming up with golf courses in here, who, um, a former mayor who is no longer with us, this was his thing, he wanted to have a golf course in there and, but we keep having it in there, at least, you know, prompts maybe some discussion. But I know all the mitigation that was done for the California Tiger Salamander and that was, that was handled and then DMV and I think, was it UPS gonna go out there too? I think at one time, was it? Okay, but there was something else that was gonna go out there. Well, then, of about a year ago, maybe not even a year ago, SB CAG was looking for office space up here in Santa Maria and they had a hard time finding it. And I, I for one would love to see some of the government buildings that we have in Santa Barbara County moved up to Santa Maria. This is the largest city in the county and not kept in the high rent district down in Santa Barbara. We could be saving the county a lot of money by moving those government agencies up here. Might not be very popular with people down in south, but, but I think it would be popular with the, um, people up in the north county. But I, I, I just think this is a, a real step in the right direction. Anyway, any other comments, questions? Okay, um, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Oh, excuse me, I, I see our attorney here.
If I may jump in.
Yes.
Because there was, um, some concern about the environmental document, I, it would be appropriate to take all five items separately.
Take, okay, take, okay, I can do that one at a time. Okay. Uh, Madam Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution certifying supplemental environmental impact report making California Environmental Quality Act findings, adopting a statement of overriding considerations and adopting a mitigation monitoring program for the Santa Maria Airport Business Park Specific Plan Amendment, General Plan Last, General Plan Land Use Map Amendment and Zone Change.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
No.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation to adopt a resolution amending the General Plan Land Use Policy Map designations and declaring consistency with the General Plan for approximately 28 acre acres located at the northwest corner of Orchid Expressway, Highway 135 and Union Valley Parkway, GPC 2019-0002.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
No.
Councilmember Soto?
I'm sorry, Rhonda. I think I'm a bit confused. Which recommendation are we, it's the second one, right?
Yeah.
Adopting a resolution amending the General Plan Use?
Yes.
And the, and the one before this one was?
It was the?
The ER.
The IR.
Oh. I'm sorry, I'm still confused. We're not voting on them all together. It's separately.
Each separate, right.
The first one was the environmental document and this one's the General Plan Land Use Policy Map.
Okay. No.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation to introduce an ordinance and continue to a future meeting for second reading and adoption, amending the official zoning map for the Santa Maria Airport Business Park Specific Plan Amendment, General Plan Land Use Map Amendment and Zone Change Amendment, GPZ 2019-0002.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
No.
Councilmember Escobedo?
No.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to recommend to adopt a resolution to amend the Santa Maria Airport Business Park Specific Plan to be consistent with the amended General Plan Land Use Designation, SPZ 2019-0001.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I hear any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
No.
Councilmember Soto?
No.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation to introduce an ordinance and continue to a future meeting for second reading and adoption, approving an amendment to the Santa Maria Airport Business Park Specific Plan and declaring consistency with the amended zoning designations.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have, any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
No.
Councilmember Soto?
No.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Motion carries.
It's tiring when you got to do them all separate.
It is.
Okay, next item will be a report by the city manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Two items to report tonight. First is our upcoming agenda items. Thanks, Frank. The next meeting of the city council, August 17th. We have a public hearing scheduled for the CDBG priorities for the 2022-2023 funding priorities. We have regular business item for the Acquist Apache Soccer Complex update and grant approval. And we have the fourth quarter financial report. And then again, a reminder, the September 7th meeting will be at the Veterans Memorial Center at 313 West Tunnel. It'll be a regular meeting of the city council, but one of the items on that will be the redistricting item where we'll again have the consultant from NDC here to present and to receive public comment on the redistricting process. My other comment tonight would be, beginning Friday, August 6th, Santa Barbara County Public Health is mandating the use of universal face coverings indoors regardless of vaccination status. Public health is closely monitoring case rates and will be releasing a universal mandatory mask mandate in indoor settings only. The county public health department's health officer order will be issued tomorrow, Wednesday, August 4th, to be effective this Friday, August 6th at 5:00 PM. And it will be on the publichealthSBC.org website. In all indoor Santa Barbara County businesses, masks will be required regardless of vaccination status. Updated signage for businesses will be posted later this week at recoverySBC.org. But at this time, social distancing is not required. And in addition, the state of California, that was, that's the county change of regulation. The state of California also released an additional health officer order on masking and testing for unvaccinated individuals in particular settings. The updated state guidance includes recommendation for universal masking indoors statewide, adds adult and senior care facilities to settings where all individuals must wear masks indoors, and references new requirements for unvaccinated workers in the state health officer order of July 26th. And that concludes my report.
Okay, Mr. Stillwell and I were on a phone call, a meeting with the county of Santa Barbara and they had said that many counties in the Bay Area were doing this. But the, ultimately, the orders come down from the governor's office to the state health office and then to our county, right?
Although they did say on this one that the county is not being directed by the state for this particular indoor masking requirement. They said it's a county order coordinated with county or with state Department of Public Health, but it's not a state order this time.
Okay, so they have authority though? The county of Public Health has that authority?
Public Health Officer has.
I see our attorney nodding his head yes also. You're always giving me answers that I don't like. I, I did, I did text Sue Anderson because, and asked her how many people that we have in the hospital. And we have a total of 20 inpatients and four of those are in ICU. And one patient is ventilated and that's what we have here. We have a very low vaccination rate and I'm not, I'm not advocating this or not, but we have a very low vaccination rate in the county. And, and I asked them also about how about people that have already had the COVID. That does, that never seems to fit into the equation and it should, but it doesn't. And so I, I, I can't answer why we have such a low vaccination number. But anyway, we do. Okay, let's hear from council members, the oral reports. Ms. Soto, should we start with you?
Sure, no, no reportable items.
Okay.
No reportable items, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Cordero?
No reportable items, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last Saturday, 31st, I attended Doom Center reopening celebration. And also first of, by the way, first of all, I would like to say welcome to District 1. I'm really happy that, that we have this meeting and as you can see, all the kids and the families playing around. That's, and we talk about the sports complex. This is the, the example of the need that, that this community, specifically for District 1, is looking for. So I'm looking forward to have this complex make a reality. And that's, that's all I got. Thank you.
You know, and I, I, I always said this at, at our meetings, we, we never closed our parks down. Santa Barbara did. The other places closed parks down and how important it was to keep our parks open. And this shows you right here, it's so important because our people need to use and want to use our parks. So it's so important. January 21st, I attended the quarterly schools meeting. And the Riverside County has a, a very robust program on preventing human trafficking and I always attend that meeting. On the 22nd, live Q and A on the American Rescue Plan and Technology webinar. I really didn't learn too much out of that, other than we just don't seem to qualify for a lot of the money that we were thinking we were going to get. On the July 23rd, I did the Rick Blaymire Show. July 24th, Livable California. And on July 25th, the California Alliance of Local Elected Meeting. On July 26th, SB CAG Directors Meeting, Performing Arts Center Meeting and Community Needs Workshop. On July 28th, that was July 29th, California City Speaker Series I attended and I spoke to the Association of Realtors. On July 30th, the Santa Maria Solar at Driscoll Berry's. They had a ribbon cutting for new solar panels they have on top of Driscolls. On August 1st, I did the California Alliance of Local Elected Meetings. And yesterday, yesterday, I had, I had the privilege, distinct privilege of going to the, out to Vandenberg for the Combined Space Force Command and Operations Headquarters Ribbon Cutting and Tour. And it's just amazing because you think this is all part of history and all the Space Command is going to be coming here. And, and it's been here at Vandenberg, but it's even going to get better. And I don't know if anyone, if anyone made it to National Light Out at Acquist Apache Park. I was going to try to get over there before I came here, but I didn't know if I could make it or not. So any other comments from the DIAS? If not, ladies and gentlemen, meeting is adjourned.